Good evening and welcome to the January 19th Beaverton School Board meeting. We will start off our meeting this evening by taking role. If the board members will still answer by saying present or here. Anne, Brian.
Here.
Susan Greenberg.
Here.
Happy birthday, Susan. Leanne Larson.
Here.
Eric Simpson.
Here.
Donna Tyner.
Here.
Chair Colette.
Here.
And Chair Tim Chek, present. With that, members, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll start off with our first order of business. And our first order of business is welcoming our guest from the President of the BEA, Sarah Schmidt. Sarah, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent Grodding, Chair Tim Chek, and members of the board. And Happy New Year. Feels like it's been months already. I'd like to start off by talking a little bit about how the ground keeps shifting underneath our feet as the COVID-19 pandemic continues on. Today, we received some more guidance from ODE that will impact our work moving forward. I would like to express gratitude for the district message that just went out probably moments ago to address some common misconceptions. That was a really important message, I think, for everyone to hear, including explanations for why we can't immediately open our school buildings to in-person instruction and how we serve students in such a wide variety of ways. That means there are many, many logistics for us to figure out before we'll be ready to bring students and staff back in person. So I just wanted to express some gratitude for that. Now that we have a tentative agreement with the district on our financial reopeners, BEA is wholeheartedly engaged in bargaining over the working conditions for a return to in-person instruction. Our members are very united behind our proposals, and we are going to absolutely need some agreements for health and safety protections that will be in place, including having both doses of the vaccine. There's been lots of interesting news about that rollout, and we are all watching with bated breath to find out more information. Some of our members received their vaccine over the weekend who are in healthcare positions. But we, in general, just want to make sure that those things are in place. As far as other pieces, we know that we have a lot of students that need our attention and our care. We want to make sure that as we're coming back in person, we have ample time for staff to plan and support those students. If anyone would like to see our proposal, it is posted on our website, and we'd love to have you be informed about that. The only other thing I'd like to say this evening is another thank you to the leaders at our middle schools for sending out some communication recently to both families and staff about the events in Washington DC on January 6th. The message spoke beautifully to the importance of teaching our students truthfully, as well as the need for the adults in our schools to constantly be questioning our own bias and how we integrate feedback that we receive on students. I know that meant a lot to our members. Unfortunately, some of our other staff members were a little unsure how to proceed with that topic after being cautioned to steer clear of political statements. I understand that we should not get into partisan politics as educators, but what is true is that every decision that we make about our work is political. In education, the decisions about who's represented in our curriculum, what's covered in our curriculum, whose voice is centered, all of these things are political. And in fact, what we are silent about is also political. So I don't think that we can encourage educators to be anti-racist and at the same time discourage folks from being too political. What is true is white supremacist insurrectionists stormed the US Capitol to prevent a peaceful transition of power. It was a historic event in our country. And educators who work with students every day need to be truthful with the students that we have built relationships with about what's going on in a developmentally appropriate way, of course, and to help students place those events within the context of our country's history. And staying neutral is not anti-racist. I think that we are all wanting to do the right thing, and I'm hoping that as we work together to carry out our responsibilities to students that we're doing this collective work as a community using a tool that we already have. I hope that we can move forward using the equity lens that Beaverton has had, as well as our equity policy in an authentic way, and use the questions and the answers in the equity lens to guide our decisions and our guidance to staff. Thank you very much. I know this is School Board Appreciation Week/Recognition Month. And I wanted to end by thanking all of you. Being a School Board member is a volunteer position for folks in our community that don't know that. You all dedicate a lot of time to the district, and we are grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for joining us, and thank you for the kind remarks. Is Amy Knutson able to join us this evening from OSEA? Okay, maybe Amy will be able to join us later in our meeting. Next up are some of our favorite guests. And those are our members of our Student Advisory Committee, and we have four with us tonight. We have the two co-presidents, Neil and Miriam, and our secretary in communications. So who wants to start, folks? Go ahead.
All right, yeah. Hello, I'm Neil. Thank you for the introduction, Ms. Tim Chek. And at BSAC, we've been mostly discussing, you know, the two topics, mental health and school security officers. And are we talking just about, you know, our work with mental health? So with mental health, we've been specifically trying to like define our point of action of, you know, what we're trying to get accomplished within the next few months or even carrying into next year. And so, you know, some points of actions we thought we could work on is trying to create like more regular check-ins with students who, like, maybe just every week or so to get, just check in with students' mental health. Or another option we've thought of is just getting more resources in place for students, like maybe having like therapists or counselors available once a month or something in an online format, which could be like a voluntary position and just trying to, like, many students may be looking for that kind of professional help. So we've just been trying to discuss what point of action we could look at for mental health. So, yeah, those are the main things we've been doing for mental health, and I'll go ahead and pass it off to Jonah.
Thanks. Yeah, so Neil and others on the BSAC have been working with mental health. I and others with me have been working on SROs and school security and, you know, going forward, seeing what we can do to sort of reform that system. And so during our last meeting, we discussed some of the research we did regarding SROs as they're used both nationally and specifically with Beaverton. And we found a lot of interesting information, and it's going to sort of guide us as we move forward. But our next goal is to sort of get a reality, understand a reality of what SROs in that system is like, sort of on the ground, you could say. So with principals, with administrators, that sort of thing. The report that the district released regarding SROs was super helpful, and we appreciate that. But we want to, we're going to set up meetings with our principals to discuss sort of what the reality of that is like with them, and that's sort of where we're at going forward. And after that, we want to start sort of a dialogue with the, you know, school resource officers themselves, as well as administrators, and a public sort of discourse regarding where people are at across the district and how they feel about this sort of thing. And that's sort of where we're at going forward.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Riley, and in addition to helping on the mental health side of things, I also run our social media. And we are really excited. We officially relaunched our Humans of BSD Instagram. And for this, the different students on BSAC interview, one person in their school, they feel like really represents BSD. And then we highlight them on Instagram by posting a picture of themselves and then putting their interview in the caption. And so far, we've had two schools, the last two Wednesdays, Mountainside and Southridge. And then tomorrow, we have one coming out from Sunset. So that is really exciting, and we're really proud of that. And then I don't think that our Miriam, our other co-president, was able to be here with us tonight. But thank you so much for having us. We always really enjoy it and appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and I want to give a special thanks to Neil, who joined the School Board members and superintendent with our state legislators, our state senators and state representatives last Thursday, and presented a day in the life of what it's like to be a BSD student and be doing CDL. And really appreciate you, Neil, taking the time to do that. And thank you all for joining us tonight. School Board members, do you have any questions of our great students?
I have just one.
Sure, Anne.
On the committee that's working on the research around the school resource officers, I'm wondering what you see as next steps?
Yes, the next steps, right now, actually, I have scheduled a meeting with the principal of Southridge because we want to get an understanding of what SROs and those sort of policies and those officers, you know, what they really do all day and how they interact with people who work at the school. That's sort of an important element of that research. And then once we've done that, you know, we have to sort of have all our research in before we can talk about what we really want to do next regarding like any changes or reforms we might want to recommend or advocate for. But we're sort of looking towards changing how SROs are used. I mean, I could argue one more specific, if you want, or if that's sort of good enough, then.
But so I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're sort of in a research phase, and then you're planning to move into evaluating and potentially bringing some recommendations?
Yeah, that's more or less it, yeah.
And Jonah, you guys also, Beaverton students shared with you a student poll that they had done. That's part of your research?
That's right, yes. Students at Beaverton High School can participate in a poll of their sort of opinions on SROs, not just like, are you in favor of them or against them, but also like, how do you interact with them on a day-to-day basis? How do they make you feel, that sort of thing? And that was actually really valuable information for us, and that we're going to use that going forward as well. We found that the majority of students are in favor of having SROs in schools, but the majority of students are also in favor of sort of changing how they're used. And a significant minority of students are also uncomfortable with the current sort of role of SROs or how SROs behave in schools.
Well, we look forward to hearing more information, and I really hope there's a time that the board can just get together with the students, because that's what we really enjoy, is that student voice. But we really appreciate any time that we ask you to participate that you do. So thank you so much, and we'll look forward to seeing you next month. So thank you for joining us tonight. All right. Next up is public participation, and we have taken the stand that we open up our public lines for people to leave emails. And those opened up from Thursday through today, and we received 42 comments and emails. And I know most of us, board members, are also receiving direct emails from a lot of our stakeholders. And I just did a brief little summary of the 42 comments. Of the 42 comments, three came from community members, 18 came from parents, and 21 came from staff. And of our community members, two encouraged us to allow in-person learning in our schools, and one encouraged us to do that after our staff is vaccinated. And of our parents, 11 asked us to allow in-person learning. And four asked us to continue in CDL. And three were interested in allowing some sort of in-person or hybrid learning. And staff comments, we had three that asked us to continue in CDL, or eight, I'm sorry, eight decide in CDL. And six asked that, before we move forward, that staff receive the two vaccinations. And two said that they were ready for at least K through two to return to in-person. And five said that they believe that the hybrid method will be disrupted to our students and that teachers may change and hours may change. But all of the comments have been supplied to the board members to read in their entirety, and they will be entered into the public record. But we appreciate everyone for taking the time to send us their thoughts and opinions, because this is a very difficult time right now, and people have lots of thoughts and opinions. So we appreciate them taking the time to share them with the board. All right. Our next order of business is our reports. And first up is to hear from Superintendent Grodding. Superintendent Grodding?
Thank you, Chair Tim Chek. Welcome School Board, staff, and community members. Talk first about our comprehensive distance learning and limited in-person instruction and our return to school planning. And as was mentioned, the guidance and requirements for school districts regarding COVID-19 have and continue to shift, requiring our team to pivot quickly. And we know that these changes cause anxiety and uncertainty with our students, our families, and our staff. Currently, our district will remain in comprehensive distance learning, at least through the end of this semester, which goes through February 8th. And I, along with other superintendents in the tri-metro area, we just recently met with all of the major healthcare providers to partner in providing vaccinations to all of our staff in our school districts so we may expedite our ability to safely return to school. In all reality, we believe the soonest we could have this process completed would be just before spring break. It simply all depends on the availability of vaccines. Today, we received revised guidance from the Department of Education regarding advisory metrics and mandatory social distancing requirements. And later this evening, you will hear from our team regarding some of those changes that literally just took place hours ago. We continue to be in required bargaining and are working with our associations to prepare for our eventual return to in-person instruction. Our entire team is focused on working with all stakeholders regarding our return to school, our vaccination protocols, and our timelines for testing and social distancing requirements for social distancing to make sure that when we return in person, we're in a safe environment. As I mentioned earlier, later tonight, you will hear about some of those changes currently taking place in our efforts from our teaching and learning and operations teams. While there is a great desire to get our students and staff back into our schools safely, it is also important to know that predictions for positive COVID-19 rates in Washington County, as well as the state of Oregon, are supposed to increase in February. And at this time, we simply do not have definite timelines and/or specific vaccine numbers. However, today, in a meeting with governor's staff and health educators, we were told that through February 7th, Oregon is only expected to receive approximately 31,000 vaccines each week for the entire state. And after February 7th, that allotment is only going to 50,000 per week. And just as a rule of thumb, the tri-county, because of its student population and everything, will probably receive approximately 50% of those vaccinations. We are also talking about some mass distribution centers for vaccinations that have been called out to be the Oregon Convention Center. And just recently, looking at the Portland Airport and one of the parking facilities there as being a place for distribution of vaccines. In addition, OHSU is looking at a possible drive-through. For those folks who are going to have a really a difficult time in traversing the convention center. We are supposed to begin, and we have begun, the process of vaccinating some of our educators who work one-on-one most closely. Some of our nurses have vaccines, our social workers, and some staff that work directly with. Danielle Hudson has done a great job, along with Brian Seeker, the entire planning team, in getting that word out to folks, staff who can go right now and try to acquire the vaccine. And once again, as the governor put out, on the 25th, educators will be in that priority list. But it's really going to come down to the number of vaccines that Oregon will receive. Just to let you know, there are approximately somewhere between 45,000 and 50,000 educators in the tri-county area. We do believe, and hospital leadership in all of our major hospitals do believe, if we had the vaccines, they believe that they could actually vaccinate all of the educators, up to 50,000 educators, on two weekends. But once again, we're waiting for the vaccine. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about activities and athletics. We continue to follow the OHA guidelines that work with OSA to provide our students the ability to practice, condition, and compete when we can successfully adhere to all the current rules and regulations set forth by the OHA. Our district will be sending out a communication regarding athletics and some of our other co-curricular activities tomorrow, Wednesday, to our student athletes and families regarding their chance and opportunity for participation in athletics. Next, I want to move into our budget. And once again, a special thanks to all of our staff who have made a tremendous effort to try to economize, save money, and help us build an ending fund balance. We know at this time also, we are experiencing a significant decline in enrollment, just the uncertainty of the future COVID-19 financial requirements, some of our roll-off costs, and what our K-12 budget will be passed in the legislature. We do estimate some of the CARES money that is coming to us. Assistant Superintendent Schofield has estimated, we do not have the check, but estimating possibly somewhere, Beaverton School District should receive somewhere in the vicinity of $18 million to help us with COVID-19-related costs. That could include some interventions, some summer school, some of the protective equipment that we're going to have to buy, some of the social distancing protocols that are going to require additional resources. And lastly, I want to point out that our communications team has done a great job in working with our business services department to provide a video and survey to engage our staff and community as we gather input to prioritize the limited resources during this COVID-19 era. And I believe that's posted on the website, and so people can go in and they can take a look at that. Next, I want to briefly, and thank you, Jonah, for leading us into this, talk about an SRO update. And as you know, the district has engaged with students, family, staff, law enforcement, and other stakeholders regarding our SROs in our schools. And we are currently in discussion and planning a discussion with our city officials to talk about possible future reforms of our SROs and what that may look like. And also, some of the feedback that we have got regarding our SROs is what kind of reforms could be there, as well as we have support for their continuation, as well as support from some for their removal from our schools. So we look forward to our meeting with the city to discuss the future of the SROs in the Beaverton School District. And lastly, but not least, I want to take a little time, and I know the School Board members are probably going to get frustrated with me here, but I'm going to do it anyway. As mentioned, January is National School Board Recognition Month. Our School Board members volunteer and sacrifice their time, resources, and energy to serve our nearly 40,000 students in Beaverton, 6,000 employees, our diverse families, and other stakeholders within the Beaverton School District. It's important to know, unlike other states, Oregon does not pay their School Board members. In addition to helping set the vision and goals for the district, they develop policies to provide the district direction. They hire and evaluate the superintendent, and in Beaverton, adopt and oversee an annual budget of almost $1 billion. In addition to these critical and overwhelming duties and responsibilities, School Board members are now being challenged with the most significant adaptive change required to our education system in our lifetime, which has been caused by COVID-19. Further, they are leading in times of significant economic uncertainty, social unrest, and political divisiveness like we've never seen in our country. And I'll just go off script here a little bit. Like many of our community members, our families, our staff members out there, we have School Board members before you that have lost loved ones during this COVID crisis. They've lost jobs. And they have been required to take care of loved ones caused by COVID-19. But yet, through all of this, and I'm looking at each one of them, they have maintained their duties as School Board members. Multiple years of service and sacrifices that they make. I want to thank each of you personally. I know on behalf of our staff, we thank you. And finally, I'll leave you with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King that describes your service. Not everybody can be famous, but everybody can be great, because greatness is determined by service. So thank you to the Beaverton School Board for being great. Thank you.
There we go. Couldn't get myself off of you. You made me speechless there for a moment, Dawn. Thank you so much for your very kind words. And I'll just say, on behalf of, you know, myself, we thank you folks for your kind support and the recognition that you give us. With that, board members, do you have anything that you'd like to say to the superintendent or any questions on his report? Again, thank you, Superintendent. Now, you kind of teed it up already, but we're going to hear from Associate Superintendent Mike Schofield with a financial update.
Thank you, Chair Tim Chek. Members of the board, Superintendent Grodding, I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about the finances of the district. You have before you the December 31 budget and financial forecast. It is unchanged from the November forecast. However, we know a number of things will be changing. As Superintendent Grodding mentioned, we have some additional CARES Act money that we know is coming. We haven't received our school district allocation yet, but we look forward to seeing that. We have some implications due to bargaining that will show up in our forecast moving forward. We also have some additional CARES Act that came to us through Washington County over winter break. So lots of things changing, lots of numbers that will begin to trickle into the system in the coming couple of months. So look forward to that, and I would take any questions you have at this time.
Susan?
Mike, I want to just a comment. I saw on Twitter the budget presentation that I think communications worked with you on, and I just wanted to compliment both you and the communications team for a very nice presentation.
Thank you for that.
Very informative.
Communications didn't have much to work with.
Any other questions? I'll ask one, Mike. And I know, again, this information is coming at you folks like, you know, fire hose here. And I know you haven't been able to. Superintendent Grodding mentioned some of the money that's coming from the federal government, and we're not exactly sure, but think it's about 18 million that BSD. I heard, I know you haven't been able to crunch all of those numbers, but when we see things like... but when we see things like we may be responsible as a school district for testing, do we have any estimate on, you know, what that might cost or how we're going to go about that?
That's an excellent question, Chair Tim Chuck. I don't have enough detail or enough meat on the bone to really say what that will cost. We do know that we will have safe reopening costs that need to be accounted for. And so we'll continue to, as we get more information and put our plans together, we'll share that with you and be sure we communicate with you kind of what those costs of reopening are. We, you know, we have part of the budget video we provided, share some information about knowing, you know, a student need's going to be pretty significant as we begin to get kids back. And so exactly what that looks like and how it rolls out, we'll spend a good part of the next 60 days, is my guess, working through those in terms of getting our arms around all the costs involved.
And then my other question would be, just how much this has changed our budget, the budget that we put together and passed last June, and the cost that we could not possibly foresee, and now the income that we could not possibly foresee? We will get a rundown on that so we know where that is and what kind of stuff has to move forward in the next budget year?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, something different and fun. And that is the proposed name for our new middle school. And joining us is our communications director, Shelley Bailey Shaw. So, and also with her is the planning principal for the new middle school, Jill O'Neil. So Shelley, take it away.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just share my screen here a second, so just give me one moment. All right, are you all able to see that first image? Okay, great. Well, good evening, Chair Tim Chuck and board members. All of you received my full report regarding the naming opportunities for the new middle school. To give that a full read for background when you have a moment. I want to honor your time tonight, so I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. As you know, the board's job is to review the name suggestions from the community and then choose one of those names or another name that may have emerged during the process. And as a reminder, in the past, the board has chosen names with a local historical, cultural, or geographic connection. So the new middle school is located in the Cedar Mill area of our district on 118th Avenue in the Timberland neighborhood. That's why for the past couple of years, we've referred to this school as Timberland, while it served as a temporary school for students during our many construction projects. I think it's important to note, though, that that name, Timberland, is really a made-up name by the developer. And while the timber and milling industry played an important role in this community's development, there's nothing particularly special about the name Timberland. Of course, the first people to inhabit these lands were the Kalapulia tribe, specifically the Atfalti Band. We've provided some links in the report where you can learn more about that rich history. I also want to note that there are native elements that were incorporated in the design of the new middle school. The architect actually took inspiration from Kalapulia baskets and then incorporated that into the look of the exterior on the brickwork of the school. And I'm going to play a little video for you here. I want to point out the area's most prominent natural feature, which we'll circle back to later in this report, but this is Cedar Mill Creek Falls, or what's sometimes called Cedar Falls. It's thought that this would have been a gathering place for native people. It's a short three-minute walk from the school. You've likely driven by this probably dozens of times and never even known that you did. It's tucked into the woods right between Cedar Mill Church and the Timberland neighborhood. A few years ago, THPRD developed this area with a wooden boardwalk and an overlook. You see part of it right here. The falls were not only important to the Kalapulia, but also to Cedar Mill's first settlers. The falls powered the community's first lumber mill, which is the namesake of this community. Now, in the report, we did a deep dive into the ownership of the parcels of land where the school sits, starting in the late 1800s with the Hall and Jones families. I want to thank the local historian, Virginia Bruce, and the folks at Washington County who helped me with all the research on this part of the project. One of the last families to own the land was the Tupul's. And as you recall, the district acquired this land from the Tupul family in 2001. We did have a few community members suggest that we name the middle school for that family, Tupul Middle School. But I also need to tell you that in German, that name translates to the word devil. So it did not make our list. That brings us to our process. In December, we heavily promoted the opportunity to submit naming suggestions via our website. We received 400, and I'm sorry, 543 suggestions. There's a link in your report that you can click on, and you can look at the entire list. From those suggestions, we identified five top contenders. And I've listed them here, each with pros and cons. And I'm just going to go briefly through them. The first was the name Cedar Falls, or Cedar of some sort. This, of course, reflects the most prominent natural feature in the area. And it's also consistent with a location-based middle schools that we have in the district. However, there is some concern that there could be potential confusion. We do have two Cedar schools in the district already, Cedar Mill and Cedar Park. The next one was the name Ruth Bader Ginsburg. That was a popular suggestion, though I should note that the board has no history of choosing a name to honor any national figure. Third was the suggestion to retain the name Timberland. That was a very popular choice. We, as a district, wouldn't need to do any reeducating of our community. They're already really familiar with that name. But as I mentioned earlier, it doesn't really have any direct historical significance. There's something else that came through with the suggestions from the community, and that was a real strong desire to honor our Native American history in that area. And in that vein, we had two names come through, Atfalti and Kalapulia. And a couple of things, these native names are in line with the district's commitment to A-Bar work or anti-biased, anti-racist work. As I mentioned earlier, the school already has native elements, so those are all positives. The cons, both names are kind of difficult to pronounce. And there are schools with these names already in the state of Oregon. And additionally, we got some feedback from our Native American Parent Group, NAPAP. And I'm going to show you that next. So Brandon Colbert from MLD and Principal Jill O'Neil and I met with the Native American Parent Group and presented these two options to them. And they, what we heard from them is that they would like us to avoid names that were solely focused on tribes. And what they pointed out and wanted us to recognize that we have students in our district that represent over 65 different native tribes. So zeroing in on these one or two names was not something that they supported. So that led us to a conversation about choosing a word in the Chinook Wawa language. So that's a language that evolved in the Pacific Northwest as a way for different tribes to communicate between each other and also for tribal and non-tribal people to communicate. And so we zeroed in on the word for waterfall. Here's where I come full circle. And that word for waterfall in Chinook Wawa is tomwater or tomchuck. Now, the group of parents really latched on to that word, tomwater. Now, granted, there is a school in a city in Washington that's named tomwater, but there is no tomwater in Oregon. So phase three, we brought that name tomwater to the tribes that you see mentioned here on your screen for their input. We wanted to make sure that they were involved in this process. And we heard back from four out of six of them. None have raised any objections to the name. The SELET's leadership did mention to us that the word tomwater, like big T, tomwater, in this area usually refers to Willamette Falls. But they didn't believe that that discounted it as a choice. And finally, that brings us to getting input from our students. And for this portion, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Jill O'Neil.
Thank you, Shelley, for that. So I had a wonderful time visiting with our fifth graders and our current sixth and seventh graders over the course of about seven school days. And with each of the groups, I was gathering information about what their hopes and dreams are for the new middle school, as well as their opinions on the naming of the school. So I surveyed them in small groups, first with all four names, and explained to them in an abbreviated form the pros and cons of each of the name choices based on Shelley's research. And you can see that kids had an affinity with Timberland. In fact, when they could choose between the four names, 39% of them chose Timberland. And many of them were surprised that wasn't the school name already. I then asked them to vote between two choices, tomwater and Timberland. And about 66% of them preferred Timberland as well. What was interesting is the results were different from elementary school to elementary school and between the middle schools, too. So for the students who live in the Cedar Mill area, they were attached to Cedar Falls. And students outside that area leaned more towards Timberland or the other names. Back to you, Shelley.
Thank you, Jill. Just a quick word of thanks and recognition to the folks you see here on their screen. They were all really instrumental in helping me put together this report, so thank you for that. Just a reminder to the board, you are scheduled to make a final decision on the name at the next board meeting. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shelley and Jill. Any questions from board members? Anne?
I was really interested to see all of the research and excited to see the variety of names that were discussed with the community and family with the Native American Parent Group. I am curious what the conversation was about the pros and cons of tomwater versus tomchuck. And I was just wondering if you could give me a little bit more background on that.
I'm only laughing because I've had a joke with Chair Tim Chuck that if she chose tomchuck, that she, there might be some confusion in the district as to why that name was selected. But I think the overall feeling of the parent group was that they supported either. I think they just felt as though tomwater was easier to say, maybe more recognizable. But either was going to be fine with them. I should note, too, that we've had some discussion about if we did choose a Native American name, the thought that we need to go into choosing the mascot. And I know that's a conversation that Jill has had with students as well.
Having watched Jill thoughtfully work through a mascot change in the past, I'm sure that she's ready for this challenge as well. All right, thank you for that background.
Any other questions? Shelley?
I have one.
Yeah, Donna, go ahead.
It just has to do with Timberland itself. We didn't really, maybe you said in your notes, but I can't recall. But if we, I know that it's a name for a neighborhood. Are there any other, or area, are there any other Timberlands in the state of Oregon? Is there any downside with just keeping the same name, et cetera, et cetera?
So to my knowledge, there aren't any other Timberlands in Oregon. So it would be a name we don't share with others. And you recall, it was a name that was just sort of created by the developers, a made-up name. So the downside is that it doesn't have a deep connection with the Cedar Mill community. And I will say, Donna, on a personal note, I live in this community, the Cedar Mill community. I have for the last 20 years. It's a very tight, close-knit community. And we kind of like our little secret waterfalls there that nobody knows about. And so it didn't surprise me that Jill found a lot of support amongst those students who maybe go to Cedar Mill Elementary, because we know of this. It's kind of a local gem. So I think that's why that community sort of, you know, had support for the Cedar Falls name. But as far as Timberland goes, there's no strong reason to reject that name. I will point out that the board, you know, has voiced a lot of support for our A-Bar work. And this could be an opportunity to highlight that.
Thank you very much.
So I have a side note, because I noticed, first of all, thank you for all the hard work. And Jill, it's so nice to see you. Appreciate seeing you there. Because I saw a name on there, you know, there were, I know hundreds of names being nominated, but one of the names I saw on there was Verna Bailey. And she was a principal at Montclair Elementary School. But she also, you know, I just wanted to call out that she was the first African-American woman to go to the University of Mississippi. So she has a lot of history. I realize she's not one of the names out there, but I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, her amazing history in our school district, too.
Well, and to be clear, you, as a board, have every right to choose another name that is not amongst these five. What we did is, in the report, you have kind of a longer list than I've presented here. And we did denote those names that were BIPOC. And so by all means, you could go a different direction.
I would never mess with a community's naming process, but I just wanted to acknowledge an amazing individual who was just an amazing person in our school district, is also just also a world model for myself.
Anne?
So as we think about this, I've been pondering a lot about the naming of Saddle Elementary School. And I have been remembering, and also just because that school is in my zone, I've had more one-on-one experience of being able to see the impact of a name on a community. And so having witnessed that, you know, and remembering everything from the very beginning of when we chose the name, having to go through an education process of how do we pronounce it? And then watching community groups come in and solidify. And, you know, I do recall that there was a lot of support for a much easier name that had been part of a development, you know, had been proposed. And it is one of the decisions I have never regretted as a school board member. And I can see the impact that it's had on the community there. And so, you know, I recognize fully, I'm one vote of seven. And I hope that we find something that will inspire future students. And I guess maybe pushes the envelope a little bit more than, you know, I understand Shelley's joke. I also think, you know, if Becky Timchuk were not board chair right now, I think we'd be having a much longer conversation about Timchuck as, or tomchuck as a school name. And I, you know, nothing personal, Becky, but I don't think we should shy away from it because there happens to be a similarity with our board chair's last name. I think that there's a lot of impact that can come from stretching our boundaries a little bit, making something a little bit less recognizable, and then really having that community connection. So as we think about things over the next little while, I hope that we, you know, let our minds shift, you know, forward 10 or 20 years and think, what do we want this impact to look like?
I hate you bringing that up. I'm sorry, Donna.
I just said, and that kind of goes with the question I was going to ask, which is, I don't believe we have any schools that are named after the first peoples or any reference to that, or do we? Because obviously, we are on their land.
We do, Shahealem.
Oh, Shahealem, okay.
Yep. I do want to mention, and I'm glad you brought that up, Anne. One thing I neglected to say was- Yep. I do want to mention, and I'm glad you brought that up, Anne. One thing I neglected to say was. Kind of some excitement we have around the possibility of there being extended learning opportunities that are centered on. Native American heritage. If Brandon were here, one thing that we talked about was possible river restoration or creek restoration projects. That we could partner with THPRD or even partner with some of our tribal leaders in the area to do work like that. We've talked about maybe having a community garden at the middle school that highlighted. Native plants, you know, to the area. So really, you know, making it more than a name, really incorporating it in the identity of the school. And Jill, if you want to chime in with any other ideas, please feel free.
I, I think you recaptured it. I do think part of the. Parent Advisory Council, Native American Parent Advisory Council is, they wanted to be sure that if we chose a native name, it would be used respectfully. And there was quite a bit of discussion around that. So incorporating. Our Native American heritage meaningfully into the work of the, the school as well as the whole school district will be important that it's done. Respectfully, it's done meaningfully and not just superficially.
And you're the Tom Water versus Tom Chuck. There is one thing I'll bring up here. Tom Water could be rhymed with something that is less than ideal. I'm just thinking like a middle schooler. Let your mind wander is that there might be a rhyming there that would sort of be unfortunate. I'll let you think about that. Anyway, but Tom Chuck has fewer rhyming opportunities. But again, I'm channeling my inner middle schooler. So.
Leanne?
Um, I wanted to follow up. I thought Anne had some really good. Reminders to us as we think about the schools that we've been able to name. And I just want to say thank you for the great research. The historical background and just some of the importance to that community. Our church is located up in that community and I know my husband's a part of the Cedar Mill. Chamber of Commerce and they're a very tight knit group of. Individuals and businesses that love their community and really invest in it. So. I'm really excited to first of all, think about. Doing something that honors that heritage of our Native American families that were first there. Also to bring in the community and what they really enjoy with the Hidden Falls and all of that. It is a beautiful. Park like setting back in there. And the fact that some of this has been already integrated into the building architecture. And some of the textures and things around. I, I just see such a rich educational opportunity. There's also that historical house that sits there that I think someday will receive some sort of. Love and I know THPRD is in charge of it. Funding has been an issue, but. I've been in that home. It's, it, it, the school might even have an opportunity to do something. With partnering with THPRD anyway. So I think we're headed in the right direction and I just wanted to say, I just think it's really marvelous and. Really want to embrace what our community and even what the students, you know. Had to say about it. So thank you for all of that work.
Derek, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm a resident in Cedar Mill and so like, I mean, I do, I really liked that Tom Chuck for some reason, it just kind of. It resonates with me for like, you know, the Native American and the history that we read about. And, you know, I remember how it felt like when I'm meeting the Sato family, it wasn't really a big deal, right? So I think that could be something more powerful, like you said. Ten, twenty years from now, we're all like old and not part of the district at all, but it's really cool to make something that, you know, has. You know, originality and it really goes to the land and praise, respect and almost those before us. So, um, you know, open playbook, let's go, uh, you know, we have time here, so.
Well, I have to weigh in just a little bit here. It was very, you know, when, when Shelley first brought this up, I, I couldn't leave. Because what, what the irony of this is my last name is my married last name and Tim Chuck is Ukrainian. And, but I am Native American. So to have this come in, in this kind of circle was, which it's. It ironic at, at, at most and I. You know, even when, before Shelley sent me all the things, I, I so appreciate the work that the communications team did in such a. Professional way, thoughtful way, passionate way. And that they reached out to our community before they even presented this. Cause I think a lot of times we, you know. Shoot, then think about aiming and this time it was going out to the community that would, and I, I really appreciate that. And I thought from the very beginning, the first time you went through a tour of, of that school. You can't, you know, that Native American basket we on the outside of the building hit you in the, in the natural surroundings. But I also get the difference between Sato, which I think was so rich and to have the connections with that family and the dedication there. Was so meaningful. But this school has had this name for four years and people do get used to familiarity and, and just kind of, so it would be. But it doesn't mean you, you should avoid something just simply because it would, you know, not be the easiest thing, thing to do. But you guys have given me a lot of perspective tonight because I really did think there is no way someone. It just people would, would just think it's ridiculous that a name be so similar. But I, I do think the historical perspective is very interesting. So. We will have something to think about before our next board meeting and I welcome. Board members to reach out to Shelley or to Jill, but definitely we will need to be voting on this next time. So. Be, be sharing your thoughts between now and then. But thank you so much for the great presentation tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Next report is return to school. I don't know really what we have to talk about, but if you guys want to have a. Report, we'll, we'll take it. Now, this is a, a very critical time and we appreciate all the work. That the staff has, has put in. So. Deputy Superintendent Hansman, if you want to start off or Dr. Seeta is going to start us off.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Tim Chuck, Superintendent Grodding and School Board members. First of all, I'm really grateful that this is School Board Recognition Month. On behalf of teaching and learning, I would really like to thank you for your stellar service. Especially during these times of stress and frustration and uncertainty. You have really stepped up and given us our team really consistent supportive leadership. And as you know, this work has not been easy and we've come to you with many different thinking around return to school. Many different positions that we will be starting and it continually changes. And you've been very patient and also very supportive during this time. So. Just know that you are really appreciated by our district and our team and thank you for your service. Brian, Seeta, as you know well by now, our administrator for curriculum instruction and assessment. Is going to lead you through another update this evening for return to school. Along with a potential timeline for the next few months. And as you know, those are always. Up for a challenge in terms of if they will stay the way they currently are tonight. And just with new information that we've received as well. So thank you again for all that you do and. Brian, you can go ahead and take it away.
Thanks Jenny, appreciate it. Thanks Board Chair Tim Chuck, Superintendent Grodding, School Board members, community. It, it's been well documented, well said tonight. Just thank you all for your service. Thanks for volunteering your time, your efforts and your energy to our students, our staff and to our community. I, I have a presentation I'll, I'll take you through that is an update of both comprehensive distance learning. As well as some. Thoughts and ideas around the new guidance we got today. Happy to take questions along the way and have also certainly reserved time. Plenty of time at the end for questions and comments as well. So if you just, on your screen, just a reminder where we're at right now in comprehensive distance learning again, I, I go back to this every time. Because it is what the majority of our thirty-eight thousand students are, are experiencing and that is online or, or you know, computer school. Students are engaged in learning five days a week. Our teachers are using consistent tools. Students have access to live, live instruction or live interactions at least once a day with their teacher and grades and credits will be awarded. The only limited in-person instruction, the only piece of on-campus or onsite instruction we're doing is around the area of evaluations. I just think it's important that we, we do ground ourselves as we keep talking about a return and that this is what our students are experiencing now. So I, I, again, I wanted to take the time to do a brief update on CDL again, because this is right now what our new normal is. And I, I, I think it's important. I think it's important for us all to remember in our community to remember that this method of learning will be with us throughout this entire school year. In, in some form or another. It may vary by how old you are to the frequency of it. Or it may vary even on what choice you make as far as what our community chooses to do as we get closer to hybrid. But, um, we won't just get to put CDL away. We need to remember to keep improving it, to keep. Keep refining our skills, keep supporting our students, keep supporting our families, keep supporting our teachers and our staff. Um, so with that, I have kind of two ideas that were in your report, two pieces that I'd like to share with you and happy to talk about more. If needed, but we're going to talk a little bit about attendance and then a little bit about where we're at as far as student progress, as far as it's related to the grades that they're earning in their classes. So attendance, this top graph this was in your board report. The bottom graph though, it's similar, it wasn't on your board report, it's similar data though for the previous year, just for a kind of a point of comparison and. While we're, I'm not going to read every, every number there to you, I'm going to point out two trends. And then some comments for us to really think about as we continue to move forward. As you can see in, in, in both the top and the bottom graph, so both this year and, and last year. We do see a significant decline in attendance in December. That's something we've historically seen, we've seen it forever. We attribute that to both. Kind of common colds, natural illnesses, families doing various, various things in December. What we're, what we're not seeing this year yet, or at least not to the same degree. In previous years, years, we really do see our attendance kind of rebound again into January. It's, it's probably too early yet to say if that were to happen, this data is about a week old. But that's something we want to keep an eye on is this kind of declining of attendance in CDL. Is it, is it the same we've been seeing yearly and we can expect a rebound or is it maybe more related to? You know, a, a CDL fatigue, if you will, or, or issues related to that. And I would have to imagine that some of that is probably going on. You know, this is, we, we know that this is not optimal for our students, not optimal for our staff. And so, um, just an area for us to keep in mind. I've also tried to share with the board a number of times that, um, attendance really isn't our indicator of engagement. Just the, the way that we can kind of count a student being, being in attendance, one, it varies so widely. There's so many more options than there's been in the past. And the, the requirement has never been for attendance to be some sort of demonstration of learning. So I wanted to share with you where we're at a little bit on our course marks. And when I say marks, that grades, just, just, you know, think of it. Equivalent to grades. Top of this graph says current marks. This is just a summary of the data that was in your board report. Our school administrators. Are able to access this data real time. So this data is accurate from a teacher's grade book. And that's important to distinguish, meaning it's not at the end of a reporting period. So this is right where they are now and, and I'll just share while. What I'm going to present today, I'm not going to present as if it's positive. Um, what I am going to say is the, the data tends to get better when we get to that final reporting period. I, I will share our students looking forward to that February eighth kind of end of, well, February fifth, I guess, end of first semester. Many of them are working really, really hard right now to kind of get caught up, if you will, complete things that they're yet to complete and teachers are, are giving additional assessments. So. Historically, we see grades improve when that final thing comes out, but, but I'm presenting here some of the challenges that we're still going under in CDL. And as you can see, we, we talk about green, yellow and red zones. That's just arbitrary cutoffs we've made really based on the number of classes that you're in risk of not earning credit for or, or receiving that DFRI. Grade mark. With, with all students, obviously, as you can see, about sixty percent are in the green zone. Limited risk, they could have up to one D and about forty percent of our students, if you look overall. However, what the data also shows is just another impact that COVID is having in another way that the disproportionate results of our system are, are, are coming out. And another data piece suggesting that our, our students identifying as students of color are. Were, were, were further finding challenges and able to, to help them all meet their educational goals.
Brian?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Anne.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, it's okay.
I just wanted to clarify one thing on this chart. All students is everyone, including the Latinx and. African American students?
Yeah, it is, Anne. I think your report might list out every demographic group separately. All students does also include the, the students listed in the other groups.
So if I was just to extrapolate out, you know, if I'm looking with my equity lens, what I'm seeing is that white students are close to. Ten percent or less in the, in the red zone as opposed to the Latinx or black students. That are up in the one-third of students in the red zone.
Yeah, we can dig and get the exact numbers, but you're, you're absolutely right on the right trend. Certainly, I'm not sure of the specific numbers. I don't have that right in front of me, but the trend is accurate. Okay, so, um, again, I just switched slides in case you didn't notice, this is the similar, same data just for the, at the high school level. Little bit, little bit higher percentage of green zone students with our all students. Again, the disproportionate. Impacts of our students of color are, are being displayed at high school as well. So some of the things we're, we're working on, again, I, I don't pretend to have presented that data like it's a positive, but I will share what our teams, our schools are, are working on. In order to hopefully make some progress in this area. One, there, there's not many requirements that we can change as far as kind of graduation requirement to high school. But we did eliminate the need for the credit associated with the career ed credit. It's a point five credit, but that is something that's within our control and that's just something that was CDL. And in alignment to some decisions the State Board of Education made. That's something that we can take a little bit of pressure off the students with. We've published priority standards or priority targets. So what that would mean is student, teachers are teaching to and should be assessing to. Less targets in a given class, asking teachers to really prioritize those targets that exist over the entire, entire course. And less about the ones that only maybe show up for a, a week or a, a small point portion of the course. Really reinforcing assessment literacy and best practices in assessment, giving those multiple opportunities for assessment. When I talk about multiple modes of assessment, really talking about where one student may be doing something maybe like a test, if you will. Another student might be doing a portfolio and another student may be just having a conversation with a teacher. So. Really trying to allow that student to demonstrate proficiency in a way that may or may not be exactly the same as some of their counterparts are in class. As of today, our, our secondary leaders continue to refine guidance on appropriate ways to. Assess students and grade students and report out to students and families about progress as it specifically relates to comprehensive distance learning. And again, trying to make sure we have a collective message across all secondary schools. And again, our, our leaders are working on that as, as, as we go. Superintendent Grodding, Associate Superintendent Schofield, both mentioned federal funds. As we look at a teaching and learning department on that, the, the key thing to think about is just extending our time with students. We, we need more time with our students engaged. We want that to be extending the school day when it can be in person. We may want that to be extending the time to earn credits. All those systems really require us to just have more time with students interacting with our staff. Much of that, you know, if we can get into in-person or not, by the time our, our, our students have moved on, of course, that depends on. A lot of the metrics, but as we develop those plans, we'll keep you updated on what the, what we're proposing the use of those funds to be. But it really is just extending the amount of time that we can be engaging with our students. Uh, yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I, going back to the students in the red zone. When a student reaches the red zone, is there additional intervention that's happening? I know we had the. That I think was the wellness teams that came and talked to us and I appreciated their work, but is there, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about their work in terms of like wraparound services. Do we have something in terms of academic interventions that we're doing right now to identify these students? And if so, do we know how many students of that percentage of students who are in the red zone that we're, we're actually reaching with those services?
So Tom, I don't, to answer the second part first, I don't have the numbers of students that maybe like were in the red zone last week. And then came out of the red zone this week because of the interventions that were done. But you're, you're right in that this data informs the behavioral health and wellness teams. It informs the school administrators as far as who they're doing their outreach with, but a. A, a position, and that's understating. It informs the school administrators as far as who they're doing their outreach with, but a, a, um, a, a position, uh, and, and that's understating a very important group of people. But our, our graduation coaches is a, as a team, we haven't really talked about as much, but each high school has at least one graduation coach. And these are employees that really reach out to families and students who, um, are, are in that red zone, who in this case, right, are, are, um, at risk for not graduating or not going to be on time to graduate. And really they're working one-on-one of families to remove the barriers, whether that's academic support for the students or in CDL, it could be any number of barriers they're trying to work through. Um, Tom, I'll have to see if I can get more of that data though, on kind of how that red zone declines week to week. I just didn't pull that for you.
Yeah, c- because that's what my question is, is when looking at this, I'm seeing a snapshot in time. And I'm trying to understand, are we successfully intervening to move students out of the red zone? And these are declining numbers. Racing numbers, flat numbers. And then, you know, maybe some sort of comparison point to where we would be in a non, you know, CDL year. Um, because I'm trying to get the full context of what's happening here.
Yeah, Tom, I can put that together for you. And, uh, Susan, it looks like you're unmuted.
Yeah, um, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is kind of looking at the state standards, realizing, realizing that we've been in a year and a half of CDL and some of our kids are behind. Has there, and I think I've asked this question before, ha- ha- are we looking to our state to change some of their metrics that they're looking for, for graduation rates because, graduation, I mean, because of that? Or are we giving our kids more choices in terms of how to graduate, different paths? I think that's really important. So that's one of them. And then looking at our numbers, our, our statistics here in terms of barriers. So a second question is not quite related to that, but it's like, do we know if our kids are having difficulty connecting virtually from their homes? Is that still a barrier or is that pretty much fixed?
Thanks, Susan. I think those actually, they're both really excellent questions. I'll just take them kind of separately. Um, when, when we talk about learning targets, we are, we do have the ability now to kind of look system-wide and say, what are the targets? Let, let's just talk about ninth grade math. Which targets really seem to be the ones that our students are struggling with most? And then we can, you know, push out guidance to teachers, we can talk about collectively working on those specific targets to, to, to remediate. A- as far as though like the state board of education or, or then even ODE giving us any kind of guidance, that, nothing at this point. That's not for a lack of advocacy, that's not for a lack of suggesting, but right now graduation, um, so graduation requirements remain the same except for, um, the requirements for the career-related learning experiences. And that's how we tied our career ed credit. Again, that's pretty minimal, to be honest with you. And then also the, um, a- as you know, the state has a waiver, um, proposed, if you will, or applied for a waiver as far as the Sback exam. And then that'll remove those requirements for the, um, um, the essential skills. As far as then one little funnel down from that, the grading and reporting on it, that it's just, it's going to continue to be local decisions. And that's what I was talking about with our secondary team, putting out that, that guidance. And then Susan, I'm sorry, I lost your second question. Can you remind me?
Well, yeah, well, there, I'm, I have follow-up question to what your answer was there because my concern is, um, and I know that we have teams out there with mental health. But, you know, the kids that are falling behind is feeling, you know, giving up. Um, so, you know, that's a concern of mine and with giving up, you know, there, it's just a cycle that it's hard to get caught back up. So that's my concern about our students. And the second question was the barrier of in terms of having access to wireless at home. And I know that we, you know, Steve and his team has worked really hard to have connectivity. I just didn't know if some of our issues with students, you know, in their grades is that they have limited connectivity to the internet.
Susan, I'm sure there are still some students where connectivity is an issue. I'm sure we're, we have not 100% you know, resolve that with everything from, you know, a, a, a hotspot all the way to the, the amount of data they can use. But it, it is more than that. I, I think the challenge actually lies with CDL is not, um, CDL is not optimal, trying to be educated in a global pandemic is not optimal, it's not good. Um, I think what we need to, and I think one thing I'm very confident in sharing is how dedicated our schools are to the first part of that question, and it is working with the human, um, the human stories that are coming out of this, the, the, you know, you, you kind of described how students are probably feeling right now and our school's leaning into it. Um, there's not a playbook for solving it, um, and it's something that we are going to be navigating as a system for a long time. Our students are doing amazing things right now. Our students are navigating a world that a year ago we wouldn't have dreamed of. Um, literally a year ago, we would have had no idea and our, our kids and our families are navigating it. So they're, they're, they are, they are working really, really hard. Um, but we need to kind of, we need to continue to refine comprehensive distance learning. And that is why I wanted to put the first part of my report on this with, with you to, to, just to remind you, to remind the community how important it is for us to continue to remain focused on this as we look to take steps out of what is this new normal. So that, I really appreciate those questions. As I transition a little bit. So on December 23rd, we got some news that the, um, that, that Governor Brown, um, essentially she sent a letter, but really what it did was those cutoff points we've been talking about for metrics for, for the past few months now, they became advisory. Um, she also reiterated her, her, her goals around public education. And again, you have the five bullet points in your report that she demonstrated or that she put out in her letter. So today we received the updated version of Ready School Safe Learners. So this was essentially the Oregon Department of Education and Oregon Health Authorities' um, next release of guidance with that change in advisory metrics and some of the direction that she had given, um, Director Gill, um, and, um, Pat from OHA, I apologize, his last name is escaping me right now. Um, the most significant change is the levels of those metrics themselves. So we'll go into those in a little more detail in a, in just a moment. Some other additions that, that we heard about this afternoon. Um, we've talked about hybrid learning, we've talked about limited in-person instruction. Well, now we have another option to look at, and that's learning outside. So you can just think of that like another bucket, like Lippi was and like hybrid was. Um, again, just got the guidance a couple hours ago, it seems like you have to have at least 75% of your walls open air. We'll look into that deeper. I don't think it's going to cause widespread change to our systems for large groups of students. But it may give us some additional opportunities for smaller groups of students or individual programs. Um, there's a, a lot of recommendations that came into place. Um, we, it sounds like we'll have to take a little bit larger role in contact tracing than we originally thought. Uh, I think Becky or, uh, there was a question from a board member around testing. Uh, the guidance for testing wasn't live yet, but we are getting more information about what it would look like to have onsite testing. Again, obviously cleaning and sanitation. The big point of this though, or an additional piece of this that we were looking for, there were really no changes to the, the, I'm calling, I guess restrictive measures, and I don't mean restrictive in a bad way, but those measures that we're calling the health and safety protocols as far as social distancing and cohorting, they didn't change. And really what, what the, what the, in the true sense of the word argument or what the rationale is, is that for these metrics to change, you have to have very strict health and safety protocols to account for the metrics that are higher. So the metrics really didn't, the, excuse me, the, the, um, boundaries that we have to fit in really didn't change. And we were thinking there may be a, a change to Lippi as far as the, the time students are on campus and, and the cohort sizing and, and, and they did not change. So they're still there. Um. Really important for the changes, you can see this in the updated version of CDL, I'll try to summarize briefly with you. So these are now all advisory, that's really important, that that's just new terminology. However, they are advisory best based on the, the health, um, our health authorities best thinking. There's still new cases over those 14 days and based on 100,000 county residents. So the idea of the metric didn't change. On a, if you see where I say 350 to 200 increase, um, in limit and definition, we didn't have a, a cutoff point as high as 350. So that's brand new now. So when we're between 350 to 200 cases per 100,000 residents, that's when we can begin to introduce elementary hybrid. Starting with our youngest students and as we demonstrate that we're able to do so safely and successfully, we can add in our older students up to an elementary school. So, um, but you know, fifth grade for us. The 200 mark, that used to be 100. So that's been increased up, up to 100. So, and, and the definition um, is a little bit different. It's continue to prioritize elementary. Secondary remains primarily in distance learning until you're able to demonstrate that you've safely implemented the hybrid. So that's our step into getting secondary schools back to something, uh, more than limited in-person instruction. And the 50 case rate has not changed. That is when all of our students would be looking at a, a hybrid model. The, the bottom remains extremely important. We still must partner with our local health authority, uh, in our case, Washington County Public Health to make sure that our community spread is low enough and, and you can read their definition. But it doesn't, it doesn't negate us from any of, obviously any responsibility of looking at, at community spread on that.
Brian?
Um, yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
In the previous guidance, there was, um, specifics about whether your case counts are rising or, or declining. And that made some of these thresholds, it changed what you could do within the threshold. Is that being carried over?
I don't want to speak too much to it, Tom. I think a lot of that, I think the default on that is going to be to work with the local health authority and know the, how the, you know, the specifics of how it's going in Washington County. I'll want to dig into it a little deeper. I didn't see that specifically mentioned, but let's look a little deeper into, um, Ready School Safe Learners to make sure.
Yeah, my recollection was that when you were between the 200 and 350 that you can maintain if you're within. If, if you started that period in hybrid or in person, but that if your numbers are increasing, that you cannot, you know, use that as an opening point. I just was wondering if that specific piece was carried over.
To be honest with you, I'll, I better check before I answer that one, but I'll, we'll, we'll be, uh, we'll be reading those, uh, in, in detail. Until the next one, until the next one comes out.
And I just, and I know you just got this information just hours ago, so I, I appreciate what you're bringing forward to us.
No problem at all. Um, I wish this could be more updated. You've seen this a million times, it continues to be the same graphic, just add to it. Uh, the, the one piece, this is still, um, this 14-day period is as of, uh, January 9th. Um, normally they would have been updated by now and, and just our, our datas, our data dashboard isn't updated yet. So I'm, I'm not sure if, I, I, I can't explain to you why, I can't tell you why, um, the important thing to look at here is just that Washington County is right about at that 350 mark right now, Multnomah County was, it was just a little bit under it. And that of course was on January 9th. So we'll continue to, to share this with you as we, as we monitor. But there's not a lot of new information on that. I just changed the lines to meet the new thresholds. So just last things, the, the, the timeline and this is probably the most unsatisfying statement I've had to make all year long. I wish I had a date that we could tell you when our kids were coming back, but this change just isn't going to allow it right now. And here's why. I think the superintendent clearly said absolutely not first semester. I think we know that in all likelihood, coming back before spring break, um, right around that spring break mark is something that we're looking real closely towards. What we have to do is really look deep at the guidance that was given to us today. We really need to understand it as well as this was based on recommendations from the Harvard Global Health Institute. When you get a copy of this presentation, I encourage you to click through it. There's a lot of, um, things that, um, they ask us to consider as we're considering responding to these advisory metrics. Um, we're, uh, President Schmidt was on earlier as, and we're also working with our, our, both of our, our colleagues, all of our colleagues from OSEA. We're working really hard to get agreements with our bargaining units. Those will define the working conditions for our staff. And so, um, until those are in place, we, we just need to respect and, and, and keep going with that process. Um, the com- community spread of the virus, um, and, and of course the COVID disease is important and just the, the gentleman who spoke with, to us today from OHSU, I believe his, his, I believe his title was a, um, medical economist or, or something like that, but he makes, you know, all the models that our hospitals are using. And he adamantly is predicting what he was calling a second winter wave. Um, meaning that we can expect our case rates to increase from where they are now. Um, and, and again, I won't, I'm certainly not an epidemiologist. He was suggesting as we come into February, at the early to mid part of February is when we would see that case rate continue to rise for, for a matter of weeks before we saw a decline again. Obviously I would, if that were to happen as, as he's predicting, that puts us above, above the advisory metrics. Um, a-again, just the, the, just final statement, I just wanted, if I can, just give a quick shout out to our, all of our teachers, all of our administrators, all of our staff members and everyone, everyone in the district, um, and all, and all of our parents out there as well as the kids just for navigating this, this challenge. Um, they, they're working, uh, they're, they're working tremendously hard in a, in a complex and difficult situation. So I just want to give them a quick thanks. And, um, I believe I left some time in the agenda for any more questions that you have. So. Chair Tim Chuck, I'll let you facilitate any questions that the team has for me or anyone else on this call.
Well, thank you, uh, Dr. C, because we know that was a very quick turnaround. Um, board members, I know we don't have all this information right in front of you because it, it just came out. So it's not like when we normally get a board book and have time, um, to comprehend everything. So it was just given to you right now. Uh, know full well, a lot of the things that, uh, were brought up tonight, especially about grading and that sort of thing. We will be doing a deep dive with our work session that will be coming up on February 1st. Um, and that will also give teaching and learning some time to, uh, research any of the questions that we may have. So if there's things that you want to see specific, uh, data on, please make sure that that gets passed on so that we can have that, um, ready. Um, so with that, Anne, I see you have a question.
I do, and, and I, uh, I don't see it in the guidance. Uh, so I'm just, now, as I look at our data, uh, and the experience of our kids, uh, as well as our, a commitment to equity as a district. I, I don't, I, I feel like I'm curious about what ODE's, uh, recommendation is for what we should be doing to better serve our neediest students. Uh, that, I don't see that the guidelines actually address the issue at all. And so I'm just really curious. You know, besides getting kids back in school and frankly, the, the guidelines all lead me to the conclusion that, that, that's not happening anytime very soon for the majority of our students. I, I'm just curious what other guidance is there for how to address the needs of our students who need it help the most.
Anne, this is Dawn. I'll take a crack at that and then ask Brian or others if they want to come in. I think, uh, number one, they're focusing on making sure that districts have, when they're planning their limited in-person instruction, that they're prioritizing those students who, uh, are not being successful in CDL and for that matter of fact, even limited in-person instruction or hybrid, if you're in, if you're in hybrid. So, um, they are talking about trying to use an equity lens, whether you're looking at your titles, title one schools or other schools that have high populations of, um, uh, special education students, uh, emerging language learner students, students of color, students of poverty. And really trying to look at expanding those limited in-person, um, opportunities to target some of those students. I just want to stay on the vaccination front. They're also looking at and wanting districts to prioritize because there's not enough vaccinations. Um, talking about which grade levels, which students, uh, even which staff, which departments uh, need to be vaccinated first. So I know that all the districts in Oregon are looking at a vaccinate, vaccination prioritization. And, uh, as you can imagine, that is, uh, very, very complex. So Brian, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
I'll just try to briefly talk about, and, and I think we all hope, we know, and we've said this for a long time, the greatest, our greatest asset is that relationship between teachers and students. And so we want that back. But Anne, I agree with your sentiment, we need to do, we need to increase that our effectiveness in school, or excuse me, in CDL. The, really the guidance, a lot of the guidance does lie embedded with our SBLS, our standards-based learning and just really trying to give students as many diff- one, reducing those and just really trying to give students as many diff, one, reducing those number of targets, standards, and giving students as many different opportunities and different types of opportunities to demonstrate their understanding. Um, that's, that's really is our, our kind of strongest asset or strongest tool um that, that we probably have from a teaching and learning perspective.
Tom, you had a question?
Yeah, to extrapolate a little bit on Ann's point, I'm thinking about two things. One is socialization and then the other is mental health. Um, and those are common themes, again, some of the emails I receive and also some of my own personal concerns about our students right now. Um, and those are things that may not necessarily be captured in the academic data. And you know, as my mind thinks about those things, I guess my, my questions would be, um, what are the mental health supports? I mean, I, I, I heard the presentation from the health and wellness team and I appreciated what they're doing. But are we able to get our students more psychological services? Are we able to bring on staff who can provide some of that extra psychological support? I know I've heard from parents that it's very difficult right now to get a hold of a psychologist and get, you know, students in to get that extra support. And then I guess my, my second question is, um, you know, a lot of the conversation centers around getting kids back into school or getting sports going on. But I think there's maybe this third area of um safe outdoor socially-distanced activities that could provide socialization, maybe even more than, you know, in-person instruction might bring in some ways, right? Um, with all of the strictures that students have to deal with when they're inside of uh the classroom. Have we done anything to develop a model around that or take those ideas further? You know, and I understand we've got OSAA over here in sports and that's one thing. And we've got the ready school safe learners over there, but there's this third space that I wonder about exploring. So um, those are my two questions, mental health and, and what can we do for socialization outside?
Yeah, Tom, thank you very much for those questions. I think mental health is, you know, continues to be a significant concern. It was before the pandemic and it certainly is during the pandemic. Um, as you know, as you said, behavioral health and wellness teams at every school, they're the teams that are going to help, you know, students find those wraparound services. As far as, you know, directly to answer your question about, no, we, we have not increased, like, we have not hired more psychologists, you, you know, at this time. Now, again, trying to wrap in just another piece. If you remember from all our talk around the SIA, the student investment account, um, not, maybe not just school psychologists, but that idea of wraparound mental health services was and continues to be a major part of that plan. I'll take it as good news as far as our forecast for what our SIA looks like it may be for next year, certainly compared to what it was for this year. And so that continues to um remain as part of our plan as we go through the revisions and submissions. And um, I, and Tom, I owe you an apology as far as not communicating well. And I owe our high school team an apology as far as what they're thinking around some of the high school's initial ideas of returning. And um, that's some of the first things that they really want to address while CDL is still going on. But how can, um, be, because of all the limits we, we have talked about ad nauseam. But what can we do to, to, to bring kids in for some of those socially, so, almost said social experiments, those social opportunities um to, that, that, that they're lacking. And so um, you know, our high school teams are spending a, a lot of time thinking about that, what that could look like. Just a quick example is when EDL day ends at 2:30, perhaps being able to find ways for students to become, be on campus within all the rules, within all the safety protocols to get some of those activities and uh in, interactions done. And then just last piece on that, uh, we, I do think that could be where this um learning outside may even help us have more opportunities for that, um, that type of um activity. So uh, again, apologize, I haven't been as clear with that in our, in my reports. That is definitely high on the mind of our, um, our high school and our middle school um leaders.
And I, and I think, Tom, and to your question, Ann, I think you're wanting some specifics. So I don't know if Danielle's here available in our expand, in, in expanding our limited in-person instruction. I believe that, you know, we've tasked our building administrators to identify the students in each of their buildings that um and prioritize them and being able to come on and uh be able to find out, number one, who are those students? But then number two, what types of interventions that they are going to need currently, but also trying to start planning uh as we start coming back and expanded limited in-person instruction and/or hybrid. What are exactly are some of the interventions? Um, uh, mental health issues that some of our wellness teams have already identified, but also just not leaving it uh with social, emotional. There's also, eventually, we're going to have to start addressing the academic needs of these students as well.
Quick follow-up on that. Do you have an S, or is there anything in the works for some sort of an assessment in terms of the, this, the psychological services our students are going to need? And I'm thinking about, you know, not just right now, is there a distance learning and how that affects our students? But also the trauma that students may have experienced during this pandemic. Um, you know, uh, in terms of people's family experience, I mean, I understand what it's like to have families that have, it's gone through COVID and what that can do to a family. And if we have any extra support that we're planning to put in place and maybe an assessment might be a first way of looking at that problem and understanding, because I, I, I'm concerned that we can have people referred over to psychological services. But if we don't have the capacity out there in our community to support the students, then the referral is not going to solve the problem.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Unfortunately, Dr. Hudson is ill and not able to, not able to join in, in comment on it as far. And I, I'd like to leave it to Herner Dean to talk about what specific assessments are. I know we've used one called ACES in the past. I don't, I don't know how relevant that would be. I'd really rather let the experts comment on that. So let's get that to you. Um, I'll, I'll connect with, with Dr. Hudson on that one. Um, I don't want to speak to it.
Thank you.
You had a question?
Yes, um, yes, I have a question. I guess I know, I sort of been, and sort of seeing the information from uh the state and recognizing that uh elementary, spring elementary school students are back is kind of different than middle or high school students. Because elementary school students, quirks quote unquote, are naturally in a pod, if you want to call it. It would just be the question of how many elementary school students do you want one teacher to manage? Um, and you know, as far as the social distancing and everything else that's involved. So I, I know that we're working on everything together, but I guess I want a sense of, are we like separating them out? You know, in essence, focusing in on elementary school students might be an easier lift. And then middle and high school students having someone else, some other groups uh work, work on that. But with the idea of getting the elementary school students back sooner, because they, because, because of just how they operate, it's a lot easier.
Yeah, no, Donna, great question. A-absolutely, right? Not only do elementary school students are kind of already built into pods, their, their pods don't really interact with each other. They don't change classes throughout the day. Um, and, and to answer your question, absolutely, we have teams working on an elementary plan, teams working on a secondary plan. And as soon as we meet them, not only meet the metrics, but again, collective bargaining and, and every requirement we have to meet, uh, our K2 will be our first students to come back to what we would call a hybrid model. So absolutely, um, we'll be, we're, I, I think we have some solid plans for our elementary students. And we're just excited for the opportunity to, to be able to meet the requirements to bring them in.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Just have a comment about trauma for our students. I mean, COVID is a big part of it, but our kids have been through a lot of trauma just from the um unstable government we've had the last uh six months or so. So I just, you know, there's a lot of trauma our kids have gone through.
Well, this is going to be foremost, um, I mean, everything we're, we're doing right now, our energy is going. We appreciate um the new information from today. And I know we'll go, you'll continue to keep the board updated. And you can see that we're, we're concerned about our students, we're concerned about our families, we're concerned about our staff. Um, and we're, you know, I appreciate how hard everyone's working to try to get some answers and then deal with all the outside factors. And if we could all produce uh vaccine, I'm sure we would, we would do that if we could. So um, anyway, thank you again for um the additional information today. And now we'll move from uh reports to action items. And uh, Dr. C, you can just stay where you are and change a different hat here and uh bring us up to date on the second reading of the PE adoption.
Uh, yeah, uh, thanks, everyone. Brian Tika, administrator for teaching and learning. Um, so uh, in regards to, this is something that at times we put in a consent agenda, but this is just the second reading. I did receive a question around the budget, so I would like to just speak to it. I'm also happy to put a report in that summarizes what, um, what I'm about to say. And it's really around cost of phase two. Um, it, it's going to be as clear as I can, though CDL doesn't make anything be clear. The largest expense, so phase two is about a $200,000 investment in resources, meaning materials, meaning tangible things that we can purchase in terms of equipment. The vast majority of that would be in terms of wearables. So um, you know, like uh, not an Apple Watch, but many of you maybe have an Apple Watch that, that tracks your fitness. That's not the brand that the, that the team was recommending. But the idea would be around wearables would have the most significant financial impact. And it's about half the amount of money um the, the, the first year and then rolling out in the future. Right now, where we're at though is, this is a bit of the confusing part. Um, the team is actually recommending that we do not move forward on wearables at all until we come out of comprehensive distance learning. They feel that um the training and the visioning around what they would be used for um was not envisioning distance learning. While they, they actually may be useful, like no one's suggesting that they're a, a bad idea in distance learning. That's just not what they built a model around. So the idea would be um, face this, this set of resources, which is the largest financial impact of the adoption. The, the timeline's just uncertain because it's dependent on when we come out of CDL. Many of the, the resources are, are pretty small in cost nature and, and can be adapted more or less to, to CDL um for that. So uh, for those of you that sent that question, I hope that's clear. I also have a report ready to, to send you all on the back end. Um, again, just a reminder, as the board adopts the recommendations from the project team, you're, you're not locking us into purchases. Um, it's just a budget impact statement that you're receiving. Purchases are always, always budget dependent, always dependent on the, the, you know, budget that's adopted. And the um, resources fit into the teaching and learning uh, uh, budget. So um, Leanne, go ahead. I see you have a question in the chat.
Thanks, and I appreciate your answering my, I was one of those that uh sent a budget question and um appreciate that. I didn't ask you this, so if you need to get back to me, that's fine, and I apologize. But it's really on, because it, it triggered when you said, you know, of course, some things are going to get put on hold because of CDL. How has phase one implementation gone? Do they feel like they've worked their way through? Are they still in the process just at the beginning? I mean, I, I haven't thought about PE for a bit because we've been a, a bit um distracted, shall I say? So anyway, just a curious where we are with phase one as we head into the phase two.
Leanne, that's a great question. Uh, I, I know, we've had even PE teachers make the news from, from what they're doing with, with CDL. They're, they're doing a great job. Um, great question, to be honest with you, what the, the work high school is still working on that's phase one is aligning all of their classes to the targets that are adopted. Um, it, it, I don't know, maybe this is not as obvious, but one thing that we do know is that uh, the PE experience can look fairly different throughout different high schools, just throughout the time. So uh, while that was a goal of phase one and the targets are adopted and implemented, the actual um kind of delivery of those learning targets, that's what high school is currently working on. And they're just needing more time with all the, all the additions that our staff has been under. They're just asking for some more time to, to get those courses aligned. So that's kind of a phase one update.
Any other questions about phase two? That, that has been great to see so many of our Beaverton PE teachers featured uh in the newspaper and, and on TV. Um, you can tell they're really thinking out of the box and trying to be proactive in, in keeping our students engaged uh during the CDL experience. So we're, we're fortunate to have um them in our school district. So with that, Leanne?
Great, and I want to just say, I just think we have a phenomenal group of PE teachers. All our teachers are wonderful, but um in light of all that, the work that they've done, I know they're leaders in the state and, and uh, I'm just very proud of our PE teachers across the district. So I move that we approve the phase two physical education project team report for our district and the physical education curriculum adoption.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, but the school board uh adopts and approves phase two of the PE um, project team report and the uh curriculum adoption. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the role of the board. And if you could answer by voting I, nay, or abstain, that would be great. Um, Ann, Brian?
I.
Susan Greenberg?
I.
Leanne Larson?
I.
Eric Simpson?
I.
Donna Tyner?
I.
Vice Chair Colette?
I.
And Chair Tim Chuck votes I as well. With that, the motion passes seven to zero. Leanne? Yep.
Um, I'm sorry, Becky, I just want to make one more comment. Um, our toaster, our toaster that helped us lead this, um, she's not with us today, Cheryl Waddell. This is going to be her last PE adoption she goes through, because it's going to be about that time. I'd just like to publicly thank her for her over 30 years of service to the Beaverton School District, leading multiple adoptions and as well as our PEP grant we most recently went through. So just a shout out and a thank you to her. Sorry for interrupting, Becky.
We can always bring her back. If there's another adoption soon, she's experienced. So thank you, Brian, for bringing that up. And thank you, Cheryl. All right, Leanne?
That we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Uh, board members, please uh signify by saying I, nay, or abstain. Ann, Brian?
I.
Susan Greenberg?
I.
Leanne Larson?
I.
Eric Simpson?
I.
Donna Tyner?
I.
Vice Chair Colette?
I.
Chair Tim Chuck, I. With that, the motion passes to approve the consent agenda seven to zero. Now, um, are there any board comments?
I have one. Um, I don't know how many of our uh fans are still on, uh, watching us on YouTube. Um, but I know that when we uh made a please for budget committee members in the past, that it was fruitful. And so um, I wanted to publicly uh remind the public tonight that uh, starting in the month of February, there'll be opportunities for them to file as candidates for uh the privilege of serving as a school board member. Um, I have personally enjoyed that privilege for coming on eight years now. And I, I want to uh put it out there uh to, and I have been, that I, I do not intend to run again. Um, and that I uh have a strong belief in volunteer service and the impact that volunteers make. I also have a strong opinion that uh the volunteer uh organizations are strengthened by turnover. Um, and uh, would encourage anyone who has questions about the process of running or what it's like to serve as a school board member, I'd be more than happy to answer questions. Um, and uh, I have a lot of confidence in our community that strong candidates will emerge and uh that our students will be well-served uh by those who are um passionate about how to best help students.
Leanne, any other board comments?
I would just like to say uh to the uh, I, I know everyone at the district office um as well as all of our staff throughout the district is, is working time and a half. But um, I'd like to just give a, a shout out um to the communications team. Um, there has just been so much active communication uh with our families, with our students. Um, the, the videos, the, the great presentations, the reach out for budget listening sessions, just lots and lots. And I, I, I know they're working overtime and it, and it shows. So want to thank them very much um for, for doing that. And um, also uh our nutritional services, uh folks who keep providing these meals. I think, you know, at the beginning, everyone was paying a lot of attention. And now they, they just consistently um and, and try to find ways of how we get food boxes. um, and, and try to find ways of how we get food boxes when the rules keep changing and the vendors keep changing. Nothing seems to be, nothing seems to be easy. And, um, especially for our families that are struggling, we hear you. We know, we know this is difficult. It is, it is so hard when we get, um, emails from families that are struggling when their students are depressed and they're down and, uh, parents don't know what to do. They're trying to juggle work and uh, they don't know what any of this means as far as childcare or what we, we know. And we know our staff, it is scary to not know what is ahead. And when the vaccine is going to work and, um, when everyone's going to get it, these are all a lot of unknowns. And with unknowns becomes fear. And we, we as a school board want you to know, uh, we hear you. And we are all working hard to try to do what is very best for our students and our staff and to keep everyone safe. This is a very complex matter and we just do not have the luxury of not doing anything. We have to keep moving ahead and keep working together to try to find out what we can do that is best for our students. And we will do that because we are a great school district with great school board members and a great staff. And we will continue to work together to find the answers that are necessary to keep moving forward. So with that superintendent Grodding, do you have any closing remarks?
Just happy, uh, school board recognition month. And I think you said it well, Becky, we have a lot of, uh, uh, competing interest out there, but keeping kids number one, uh, is our priority as we work through these complex issues with multiple stakeholders. So thank you all.
And with that, uh, meeting is adjourned and our next school board meeting will be a virtual work session on Monday, February 1st, 2021 at 3:00 PM.